Call to order this Buncombe County Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Call to order this Buncombe County Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes on your way out and it will be available today only. Ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote this evening. And we will move to our consent agenda. Does anyone from the public have questions or comments about this evening's consent agenda? All right, we do need a motion to approve our two certificate of need letters for Advent Health and Novant to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you Commissioner Horton. All in favor to for the addition?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Thank you. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Do we public comment this evening? Okay, we will move into our good news this evening. And Avril Pender has an award to Alex McKnight.
Thank you Chair. Alex, if you'll come forward. This summer to North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the President's Initiative, without a call for each county to nominate an employee for the Horror at Hands honor. This initiative was designed to honor the often unseen but deeply felt contributions of county staff and the essential roles of each county worker. In true form, Buncombe County asks our employees to nominate their peers for this award. And we ask for examples of when these nominees truly demonstrated their dedication to public service. Tonight, I am proud to recognize our honoree, the employee's choice of the Horror at Hands Initiative, Alex McKnight, Public Safety Communications Business Administrator. After years of experience in emergency response, Alex' knowledge, composure, and proficiency in high-stakes situations made Alex the Buncombe County Honoree is vital in the day-to-day operations and played a crucial role in the county's emergency operations center during the pandemic and our response to Tropical Storm Helene. During the immediate response, Alex put his own safety at risk to help locate people as part of the urban search and rescue team, proving his dedication to not only his job, but also to the community. What sets Alex apart from his contemporaries is his capacity to balance operational leadership with a values-driven yet equity-focused mindset. Buncombe County is incredibly honored to have Alex receive this amazing distinction from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We are honored to congratulate Alex and his entire team for their everyday work and invaluable service responding to Tropical Storm Helene. Please help me extend appreciation and congratulations to Alex.
Congratulations Alex. We know that is an incredibly well-deserved honor and award for you. Thank you for letting you do for Buncombe County. Our next piece of good news is our Register of Deeds Award. Drew, would you head on up to the front as well? Our Register of Deeds, Drew Rysinger is making his way to the front. Drew, it was an honor to write a letter of recommendation for you for this specific award. The North Carolina Association of Registers of Deeds honors one register each year for remarkable service and extraordinary effort. And I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award in the past year than you Drew. Over the last year, and most notably during Hurricane Helene, Drew demonstrated outstanding leadership and a deep commitment to serving the residents of Buncombe County. He went far beyond the typical responsibilities of his office, helping to coordinate emergency supply distributions, organizing volunteers, and offering practical, hands-on assistance to residents in need, including the Toilet Flushing Brigade, and organizing wellness checks on unaccounted-for persons. His office became a central point of support during the county's response, and his ability to collaborate effectively with fellow county officials was instrumental and continues to be instrumental in our ongoing recovery efforts. Drew's approach to public service is grounded in integrity, inclusion, and action. He is widely respected, not only within Buncombe County, but across the state for his professionalism and leadership, as this award demonstrates. Congratulations Drew. Thank you.
Commissioners, I want to note we got Drew to wear a jacket.
He wore a jacket. Drew, thank you. We duly noted this evening. Avril, do you have a manager's report this evening?
No ma'am.
Okay. All right, we'll move into our presentations. We have our Domestic Violence Prevention and Awareness Month proclamation, and Martin Moore is going to read the proclamation. And April Burgess Johnson, Executive Director of HelpMate, is here to accept the proclamation.
All right. Domestic Violence Prevention and Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas domestic violence, which can include physical, mental, sexual, emotional, and financial abuse, is a means of intimidation and violence to influence, violate, and control partners involved in an intimate relationship. Whereas, an average of 24 people per minute experience rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, more than 12 million people over the course of a single year. Whereas, domestic violence is a serious public health issue that results in billions of dollars spent annually in medical, mental health, and lost work productivity costs. Whereas, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any specific group of people. It can happen to anyone, regardless of racial, ethnic identity, sexual orientation, education level, socioeconomic status, gender identity, or religious beliefs. And these problems are sustained by societal indifference. Whereas, intersecting layers of vulnerability due to race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, ability, religion, spirituality, citizenship status, and spoken language in the context of American society make it easier for abusers to isolate, control, and create and sustain power over survivors with marginalized identities. Whereas, children who grew up witnessing domestic violence in their homes are deeply impacted and are more likely to have trouble in school, more likely to perpetuate and victimized by violence themselves, and more likely to experience the long-term mental health and physical health challenges. Whereas, survivors should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing that they need, and abusers should be held accountable for their violent behavior. Whereas, we know there is hope, and Partners at Buncombe County Family Justice Center collaborating to offer a safe location for survivors of domestic violence to receive forensic medical exams, assistance creating safety plans, case management, counseling, and legal support in a single location. Whereas, our combined prevention efforts work at the root causes of domestic violence by addressing the systems by which people perpetuate the community attitudes which foster and individual patterns of belief, thought, and behavior that sustain abuse. Whereas, it is survivors of abuse who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Whereas, Domestic Violence Prevention and Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with survivors, to celebrate the progress we have made in combating these crimes, and to recommit to preventing domestic violence in our community by working together in order to build a safer community for all. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Prevention and Awareness Month in Buncombe County. And we urge our residents to make the commitment to stop domestic violence by speaking out against it and learning more about the resources available to survivors and their families. This the 7th day of October 2025. Amanda Edwards, Chair, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Thank you April.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Buncombe County Commission for this important recognition and for your continued investment in making our county a safer one. It's been a hard year around domestic violence. HelpMate served more than 3,500 domestic violence survivors this year alone. We saw two deaths in our county that were domestic violence homicides. And so it's important that right now we recommit to addressing this critical issue facing our community. I also wanted to extend an invitation to members of the Commission, to county staff, and to the public to attend our Domestic Violence Awareness Vigil. We'll be on October 29th at 5:30 over at Pack Square Park, and we would love to have you all as our guests. Thank you.
Thank you April. We also have a Disaster Case Management Week proclamation, and Parker Sloan is presenting that to Lauren Patton, Sario Villarreal, Sarah Roth, Evan Richardson, and Miguel Hernandez. Thank you all for joining us.
Okay, Disaster Case Management Week, and where would we be today without disaster case managers? Whereas, disaster case management is a vital service that supports the long-term recovery journey from Hurricane Helene for individuals and families in Buncombe County. And whereas disaster case managers and community health workers work diligently with disaster-affected families and individuals to determine their specific needs, help clients develop a roadmap for their pathway to recovery, support survivors in navigating and accessing all available resources, and contribute to the client's healing and re-establishing normalcy. And whereas the complex and diverse needs of many community members require skilled and trusted disaster case managers and community health workers to navigate resources, overcome barriers, and foster collaboration among service providers. And whereas Case Management Week is nationally recognized as an opportunity to raise awareness about the important contributions case managers make to communities and individuals alike, and disaster case managers and community health workers are an important part of the case management workforce. And whereas acknowledging the dedication and expertise of disaster case managers and community health workers working alongside them supports Buncombe County's mission to enhance health, safety, and prosperity of its residents and commitment to long-term Helene recovery. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October 12th through 18th as Disaster Case Management Week in Buncombe County and encourages all citizens to recognize and appreciate the vital role disaster case managers and community health workers working alongside them play in our community's health and welfare. This the 7th day of October. Signed, Chair Amanda Edwards.
All right. Well, on behalf of the Buncombe County Long-Term Recovery Group, I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners for acknowledging and celebrating this week. The LTRG is a network of nonprofits and faith-based partners, community partners, who are all working together to support the recovery from Hurricane Helene. And at the center of this work are disaster case managers. They walk alongside individuals and households through some of the hardest chapters of their lives. They carry complex caseloads, navigate shifting and changing resources, and often do this work recovering themselves from the same storm. This recognition affirms that the essential role that they play in our community, in our healing, and the compassion and resilience they bring to it every day. It sends a clear message that their work matters, their commitment matters, it's seen, and the impact is lasting. So thank you for honoring them in this way.
Thank you to the Buncombe County Commissioners for recognizing the work of disaster case managers and the impact we've had in our community. It's an honor to serve our neighbors during their most difficult times. I also want to extend my heartfelt thanks to all my team members who are here today, if they wouldn't mind standing up to be recognized briefly. Your dedication, compassion, and teamwork are the foundation of everything that we have accomplished together. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, and our next item under Presentations, we have a Health Plan Program Status and Upcoming Changes. And Larry Reese with USI Insurance Services is going to give us more information. Good evening Larry.
Good evening to the Board. Thank you for allowing, and senior staff, thank you for allowing USI to be here to share some content with you this evening. I'll be co-presenting with my colleague Roberta Ferdinand.
Hello.
Is there a, will somebody advance for me, or is there a clicker? I need an order to advance.
Lilian is on her way to troubleshoot.
Nope, it's right in front of me. Think it would have bit me. Great. I'll do that. Thank you. Have a short agenda for you tonight. We're going to update you on your 2025 program health insurance, so you're a self-funded plan sponsor. So your medical and pharmacy claims against budget, and we'll look at dental and vision. And then we'll stare forward to '26 and see what that forecast looks like and the impact to your budget and employee premiums, and then very few changes, but a few changes that we need to cover. Some of them are mandated through the ACA program. But that's our agenda for our time together today. First, let me just suggest to you, I need to stare here. Things are good. We anticipated a spike in claims last year. We budgeted for it, so year-to-date, through eight months of data, or through July, seven months of data, you're about 9% favorable to budget, almost $2 million. And, you know, a lot of times there's curiosity over where you're spending claims. You have about 1,800 covered employees and maybe double that on belly buttons for spouses and children. Of all of that, you have 19 large claimants that are at least spending $125,000 through eight months. And we just kind of pay attention to who are those large claimants? Are they all employees? Are some of them spouses, or some of them children? And we just like to see some dispersion there, which we have. So that's good. And then we pay attention to what plan they're enrolled in. In your case, six of them are enrolled in the standard plan. You know that's the grandfather plan. It's still today. Membership slides down a little bit every year, but it's still the plan with the most membership. And then buy-up is next with 12 of your large claimants and one in core. And so enrollment, just to give you some perspective, it's almost like a third, a third, a third. I think standard has maybe 37, 35% enrollment. Buy-up might have about 30%, and core has about 30. And then what's, there's no high-cost claimants from your high-deductible, your fourth plan. You have a fourth medical plan that has 2% or 3% enrollment. So we pay attention to that as well, not just top-line financials, but how many large claimants are they? Where are they coming from? What plans? What type of enrollee are they? And we also cover their health conditions, but we don't do that in this setting. There are four members who went on to, so of the 19, how many went on to exceed reinsurer, self-funded plan sponsor? So the county would like to have some protection. When is it no longer your expenditure? You buy coverage for that, much like all of us buy auto and homeowners. And so for your health plan, once a claimant reaches $250,000, other reinsurer picks that claim up. You have four of those today, and we certainly pay attention to whether they're same-type thing. Are they an employee, or are they a spouse, or a covered child? So a little bit of swing from financial performance year-to-date over to program performance. So, you know, why is the program favorable? I know we budgeted for it, but there's some good things that the county has been doing on a consistent basis that Roe and I applaud. It's not easy to do these things, and certainly not every year and often, and you guys do them well. So annual health risk assessments, you're giving people a peek at how is my personal health condition? And what can I do different in that health journey to change outcomes and close gaps in care? You also offer free physical therapy. Amazing, great program. I'm sure that contributes to less knee and hip replacements, and certain a satisfied workforce. Same with other chronic conditions. That might be low back pain, that could be COPD, that could be heart disease. So your associates enroll in Blue Cross Synergy and Care ATC Chronic Condition Programs. Your autoimmune program, I don't know the head count these days, but I want to tell you there's at least a dozen, maybe two dozen folks. If you know anybody with autoimmune issues, this is an absolutely wonderful program for you to offer to those people. I guarantee you if they were standing here, they would hug every one of you for allowing them to have this program. Well Works for your Wellness Platform, that's a great platform that's been in place now for a couple of years. And then you also offer some first hour through My Strength is your EAP, your Employee Assistance Program, and then Teladoc. And then you offer a weight management program, which is coaching for lifestyle change in addition to medications to treat that condition. So a little bit more on the success of the program. You use Blue Cross Blue Shield. We look at that every four or five years. The discounts here are amazing. So if you didn't have a 55% discount off of charges, you would have spent an extra $30 million. So it pays to have a PPO network being deployed for, oh, forgive me. Let me catch up. How am I doing? I need to go back now. Yep, there we go. Thank you. I apologize. I think we're all back together now. Nurse care management support programs, your generic substitution rate. So what is that? Not all medications can be dispensed generic. Some people have to take brands and/or specialty. And so for you to have a generic fill rate, why does that matter? Helps manage cost, and if generics can be filled, it's obviously the employee or your covered member's choice. The co-pays are designed to help them make a decision on that, but that's a phenomenal fill rate. Your medication possession rates are amazing. Net results is a Blue Cross program that helps steer that to the right. Pharmacy program, and Roe helped me stay on the right slide if you would. There, thank you. Flex access, that's where mail, home delivery, that gives your employees a way to get drugs on a cheaper level through that, and that program's saving almost a third of a million dollars, which is also fantastic. And your diabetic programs, that's, the enrollment in that program has remained steady. It could be better. We're working on that. Your DIM program, Diagnostic Imaging, that's just a management program that helps steer members to the most cost-effective place to get an MRI or preventive procedures like that. Your preventive screening rates are amazing, so we track all of that, and so that contributes long-term to claim management. And your rebates year-to-date are 2.9. We think that'll finish much closer to 3.5, so a lot of great things going on. Thank you Roe for helping me stay up to speed. So that's 2025 year-to-date and the success that you're having. And how does that translate into a forecast for 2026? The forecast for 2026 is a little over a 5% increase estimated at 1.7 million. And the county is picking up all of that, so there'll be no premium increases to employees. There'll be a little bit of a plan design tweak because you have to under the high-deductible plan due to the federal regulations. But if you kind of wanted to see what are the employee payroll deductions on a bi-weekly basis by plan, by tier, here they are. And again, these were 25, and they will be the same for 2026, so no increase to employee premiums. That was a lot relatively fast, but things are good for the program year-to-date. I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Roberta, and she'll share some insights on the other programs.
Thank you. Thank you Larry. To coincide with how things were running well this year with the dental plan, the plan was running well enough that we were able to negotiate a 6% increase. We're dental trends running closer to 8% or 9%. And with that 6% increase, we were able to get Delta Dental to agree to a two-year rate guarantee. So the dental rates for 2026 and 2027 will remain the same. So there'll be a slight bump this year, but then for two years, those rates will be locked in. And you can see here our current rates and then what they will be for 2026. And then for vision, that's currently under rate guarantee. So what that means is that there are no rate changes or plan design changes for the vision for the 2026 plan year. Yeah, there we go. For 2026, the plan design changes that are required to be made, as Larry mentioned earlier, are on the high-deductible health plan. The IRS each year designates deductible and out-of-pocket levels in order to qualify to have that health savings account partnered with the high-deductible health plan. So this year, the individual deductible is going to increase to 1,700, which is up $50. And the plus-one or the dependent deductible is going to increase to 3,400, which is an increase of $100. And then on the out-of-pocket maximums, it's the same increases, 4,700 for individual, up $50. And then the family out-of-pocket maximum will be 9,400, up $100. And to keep pace with those increasing deductibles, the county also adjusts the seed money that they provide, and they contribute to the health spending accounts, health savings accounts for those members, employees enrolled in the high-deductible health plan. So the individual amount is going to increase to $850 for the 2026 plan year. And then any employee covering dependents, that amount will increase to 1,700. And then any employee covering dependents, that amount will increase to $1,700. For the first time in forever memory, one of the big changes that is being made is on the dependent care account. Previously, the amount was set at $5,000. And this year, that amount is being increased up to 7,500. So those employees that are putting aside money on a pre-tax basis for dependent child care can now take advantage of an additional $2,500 to be put aside pre-tax for their childcare expenses. And if they're filing jointly, then each spouse can put aside 3,750. And then a change on the employee assistant program is the, we're going to change the number of annual visits from 10 down to five.
Let's be clear, that is going from an annual 10 to five per event.
Per event, yeah, thank you.
We'll make sure we clarify because it sounds like we were cutting a benefit. We're reacting enhanced in the benefit.
So it's actually better because you're getting more based on events. Then, then these are some additional changes that we decided to make based on utilization and benefit to the county and your employees. So through Blue Cross, we will no longer be offering the My Pregnancy app. Essentially, there was no utilization of that program. Healthline Blue Nurse Hotline, again, no utilization for that. There are other more robust products that Larry went through earlier that are offered to your employees. So that was getting, that wasn't getting any utilization either. And the Eat Smart Move More Way Less program with the implementation of the VITA More Robust Coaching Program, we decided to sunset that program as well. And then whole life insurance through Trustmark. Due to extremely low participation in that program, the decision has been made to no longer offer that. And any employees who currently do have it and they wish to continue it, they can do so through direct bill and that information will be communicated to them on how they can continue to offer that. And then for upcoming events, open enrollment is going to start on November 3rd and it will run through November 17th. The health risk assessment, the annual health risk assessment is currently underway and that is required to be completed by October 31st. And this is a new change. We typically come and present around September, October each year. We're going to be moving our timeline on how we present plan year changes to plan design and contributions. So you'll get to see us again in March where we will present what our recommendations are for the 2027 plan year. And we just want to prepare everyone for the possibility that while things are great this year and there was no increase in employee contributions on the medical plan for 2026, depending on how the next several months go, will depend on whether or not we can keep that going forward into 2027. So there is the potential for plan design and increases in employee contributions. And that's it? Any questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
First of all, on the dental insurance, I don't think you said this. I assume there's a lot more employees that opt into the regular health insurance and just leave out the dental and not do the dental. And I'm curious if you have that data and how that stacks up against to our peers or...
Actually, we do, and there is significant enrollment in the dental plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it is very comparable.
It is, it's not identical, but it is comparable. So your thoughts are right. There are some people who take medical who don't take dental. But it's, because the dental's voluntary, it's 100% employee payoff. So it's up to them, but the majority of people do.
Yeah.
Great. And then my last couple of questions are on the EAN. That's our, that's the unique kind of mental health-related program, right? Is that through, I guess, who pays for that? Is that through Blue Cross or is it kind of a standalone thing?
That's a standalone product.
Okay. And then people that use that, can they select their own mental health provider or is it kind of a, you sign up?
That is kind of a, do you want to take it or you, oh. It operates like, it's an EAP. So you call an 800 number and you're getting assistance right then and there. If you're required, if your condition is deemed that you require more attention, then they'll help refer you to somebody, hopefully that's on your health plan, that can continue your treatment. It's not meant to be a, a long-term solution. It's more for like that immediate need and kind of getting you through maybe an incident for a determined amount of time. But if more, if more care is needed, then that person would be referred to a professional for longer-term treatment.
Got you. That was my question was kind of how, how does, how do any of these programs kind of line up with an employee's desire to have kind of a long-term mental health program?
Right, yeah.
The EAP clinicians, it's My Strength is the name of the company. I think that's formerly known as McLaughlin Young. A pretty prevalent employee assistance program across the country. They do have their own providers. And as you're thinking about and Roe sharing, they do refer in. So if the type of mental care is beyond scope of the EAP provider or appears to, it's going to last longer, Blue Cross Blue Shield's PPO network also credential and includes those type of providers. So the way it's supposed to happen is a warm handoff and basically the EAP clinician makes a referral to an in-network provider with a higher scope of practicing. And they get familiar with that referral system. They're also kind of gauging the patient and trying to align that referral appropriately.
Are there other questions? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move into new business. Robert Brown from General Services is on his way up to give us a little more information about our EMS construction contract. Good evening, Robert.
Oh, it's not on the screen. Okay. So Commissioners, hi, thank you. I'm here to ask for your approval for the EMS construction base, which I previously asked for the budget amendment. The agenda intended is the facility information, apparent low bidder, contract amount, funding, general project information, estimated construction schedule and requested action. So as I presented previously, the facility is standalone, 1,214, 12,214 square foot, three-bay EMS facility. It has the ability to house in bedrooms up to 12 personnel, has offices, has watchroom, it has a medical supply room, equipment storage. When I say three-bay, that means six vehicles are able to be sheltered. It is a full electric facility that meets our LEED resolution. We are actively working to meet the gold level because it is such a rural and small piece of property. It's very hard, but we are keeping track of all of our efforts so that we at least can be proud of how much we have tried. If we don't, but I mean, we're working towards that. We are replacing 19 spaces for the pool because that's in the front parking lot is where the facility is being built. So directly beside the pool, we are building a new, smaller parking lot to accommodate the needs of Owen Pool. So the bid and budget, apparent low responsible bidder, three companies bid on July 31st of this year. Carolina Specialties Construction is the apparent low responsible bidder. Their bid was $8,407,908. Budget increase approved by the board, August 19th, I'm not sure if it's correct, yes, of 25, regular meeting, that budget, the budget increase was approved by this board, August 19th, for the FY '23 EMS base construction. So no additional funding is required. You don't know how relieved I am to be able to say that. I'm sure you are too. Little bit of project information, also kind of an aerial view. The facility is, like I said, located in the front parking lot area of Owen Pool, which is a new address, 750 Old US 70 Highway. It will house two paramedics with one ambulance. This is initially with one ambulance and community paramedic unit and one supervisor. It will operate 24/7. It is a standalone EMS facility. It is the first station that we built in that fashion. It is not a public facility, but it is, it has a triage component to it in case the public come with an emergency to the facility, they'll be able to be treated on-site. The facility will improve response times in this area, addressing call volume growth and providing faster services during emergencies. Faster EMS response times directly translate into lives saved. Like I said earlier, supplemental parking is being constructed right beside it and that address is 121 Stone Drive, which was a previous residence that no longer exists. The county is also through Cape of setting up community outreach with approximately three events forthcoming. Estimated construction schedule, tonight I'm asking that you approve the construction contract. If that occurs, if you approve that, then I intend on having a notice proceed for October 20th. Construction will be approximately 14 months, which means from October 20th to December 24th, October 20th of '25 to December 24th of '26, we'll build a building. Approximately two months after that, I'll finish the commissioning and have the personnel moved in. Two months, usually when you finish a building, you just move right in. In this case, because it is LEED gold, it has enhanced commissioning, systems commissioning that has to occur after completion to ensure that all your systems are working as they are designed through the LEED standards. That's new to what I think you normally see in here, here. So the recommended motion, requested action, approve the resolution that accepts the EMS East Station Construction Project bid and authorizes the county manager to execute the contract.
Thank you, Robert. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Not, do we have a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Horton. Second Commissioner Whitesides, I think that's who I heard first. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Robert. We appreciate your work. And we also appreciate that that number did not increase. Thank you. All right, we have a budget amendment to accept United Healthcare Grant to Fund Mobile Integrated Health Initiative. And Claire Hubbard, our Community Paramedic Program Manager, is going to give us some more information. Good evening, Claire.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nice to see you all. Claire Hubbard here for Emergency Services as well, just to give that brief status update and overview of our Community Paramedic Program in the context of the United Healthcare Grant that was just provided to us recently to expand our services into mobile integrated So currently, our program, hang on one second. There we go. I wanted to give context for the gaps identified to enhance into mobile integrated health by giving it just an update about our current staffing and services, which I think help illustrate the progression into mobile integrated health, largely by the things that have identified by the current program. At this time, we have obviously our post-overdis response team and our mobile community outreach team. A lot of our staffing is still grant-funded, so just wanted to give the context that six of our regular positions, myself and six of our community paramedics are from general funds. Eight of our staff, which are three CP supervisors, three of our paramedics and a case manager and peer coordinator are all funded through opioid settlement. And then two EMTs who are still funded through July of 2026 are in ARPA, coming out of ARPA funds. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Just one question about that. So with the, right, because the two full-time EMTs are ARPA-funded, which end in June of '26.
Mm-hmm.
So are those, like, I guess, are we looking at things around that?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that question?
Yeah, she asked about that first slide and I just noticed on that that June 26th are when the two full-time EMTs are in the ARPA funding. So at that time, are we looking for other grants or are you looking at bringing that back to us with just how you do all the staff requests?
Yes, it would come back through the budget. So this ends at the end of the budget process. So as we go through the budget process for '27, we'll discuss this specific, this funding for this folks. We're not aware right now of any grants that would fund these positions, but we will look for that, but we intend to have that conversation as part of our budget conversation.
Thank you.
I don't know. Yeah. Sorry, my monitor has gone blank, but we'll work with it. So again, just a brief overview of our services. I believe there's a couple of updates in there from last time we presented. We're still using, we're still doing referrals. All of the members of our team make referrals to our port paramedics. We have contracted staff, peer supports, mental health clinicians, EMTs. Everyone within our program can refer patients to MAT and port. And this is just some aggregate data that I won't list off, but if anyone has any questions, these are our most current data points, which are largely suboxone inductions, mental health clinician referrals. When we say higher level, when we talk about higher level referrals, it's usually to detox or rehab. Ah, thank you. I'm very blind and I can't believe I even made it that far. Great. We also wanted to include some of the trainings that we offer monthly. We have been offering trainings to schools and churches, other stakeholders, and those have expanded from JUST, Narcan, and Safe Use to CPR and Stop the Bleed, which leads into some of the mobile integrated health capacity if we had more staff. That other half of the program, those two EMTs referenced, which is our mobile community outreach team, some of the data on here just represents their client therapy sessions. Again, our mental health clinicians and peer support and contracted staff work for both sides of the program and refer back and forth to each other. So when we have mental health referrals on this side, it's referrals made by those two EMTs who are out in the field largely doing scheduled events Monday through Friday with stakeholders. Just some, some services listed, which are transportation to and from pharmacy for, for patients who are enrolled on that side of the program and often weakened stopgap coverage. So like I said, the current services, the current team we have have really helped us identify some gaps in care. What I mean is that often we'll have a port patient or a community outreach patient who we can provide a certain amount of service to. And once we can get them stable and provide them MAT or outreach, they then become more stable and need help with chronic disease management. And our program spans a wide range of age. We have a lot of people who are teenagers and we have a lot of elder people. Substance abuse, substance use disorder and mental health and housing and security often span our entire age gamut. So some of the service opportunities that we've identified through port are things like post-op follow-ups. We do offer wound care and we do quite a lot of wound care in the community, but it often tapers out after a couple of weeks. I usually call what we do bridge care. So even if we're doing wound care, it's still a bridge to something more stable. And then when we talk about unmet MIH services, that's often stuff referenced in the presentation. that's, um, often stuff referenced in the presentation about chronic health, um, you know, diabetes, cardiac issues, uh, COPD, ju- things that someone, even if they, once they're stabilized out of housing insecurity or substance use disorder, they'll need long-term care not to return, um, to that status. And then I want to just also mention the follow-up services. We have a, a large amount of our, our current patients who need Hep C, ETB and other communicable disease management beyond what the public health or current team capacities are. They're after hours, they're, they don't, um, it's not as easy, so... So this was a grant given to us through United Healthcare. Um, it's a half a million dollars for a year. It would provide us with two full-time paramedic positions, um, a part-time position in a vehicle. And when we say MIH services for twelve months through the expansion of our program, again, we're talking about the extension of services we already offer and the services that we've identified we, we just can't offer people if we're prioritizing overdose and, and, uh, mobile, uh, Suboxone. I think I've already said it, but essentially there's getting people out of hospitalization and, uh, addiction, and then there's just preventing relapse or houselessness as a result of not having, um, that access, so... The goals of this, um, are to have capacity to provide follow-up care. Currently, we just can't. Um, we can work with people for about a week, sometimes two weeks, and then we just don't have the staff or the bandwidth, um, to build out ways to do follow-up care for chronic disease management. And this would... I, I believe increase, um, our capacity greatly to, to reduce non-emergent ER transports and utilization, which again, we can only do with a pretty narrow, um, demographic of the population right now, but I think we could, we could probably reduce the burden on nine-one-one a bit more with staff dedicated to those chronic disease issues. And decrease inpatient hospitalizations. And that's all. If you have questions about our goals or requests.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sloan.
Could you clarify or explain more that, that, the previous slide, that last bullet? Decrease inpatient hospitalizations for, oops.
Uncontrolled chronic diseases. Yeah.
Just out of my depth from an expertise point of view, what, what is that bullet? Can you explain that a little bit further?
Mm-hmm. So in traditional community paramedic programs, which are more Mobile Integrated Health, uh, oriented, um, they, there are about fi- I want to say five identified, and they're broad medically, they're broad terms, there's a ton of conditions within them, but generally when we talk about that, we're talking about COPD, diabetes, heart failure, um, things that requ- require repeated hospitalizations. So typical Mobile Integrated Health programs, uh, get ahead of those issues before they're exacerbated, if that makes sense. Like someone can go a, a long time with those, with those diseases, diseases and not need to be hospitalized, but to be able to really manage them before they're admitted into the hospital, you'd need someone who has pretty intimate knowledge of that patient's, um, treatment, their, their history. Um, does that answer your question? They're, they're the most highly identified, like high utilizer, um, conditions that people just are repeatedly hospitalized for and, and will need to be repeatedly hospitalized for even with adequate care if they don't have someone who can like go to them.
Arguably the most expensive kind of categories of...
Yes, arguably.
The frequent, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And then when you apply that to people who don't have housing security, who do have mental health, uh, issues and who have substance use, you get a, uh, quite a bit more of those expensive hospitalizations. Thank you.
No, I was asking for other questions.
And there's no other conditions? It just seems like we're just getting free money to continue life-saving work? You can brag on yourself and it's not...
I think we're getting, um, we're getting gifted this money to enhance our services and, uh, in, in our, our being encouraged, um, to follow the gaps in care that we've identified that there are no current services for, which are largely that Mobile Integrated Health component.
And I also believe as a proof of concept, that can be scaled across the region.
Yes, yeah. Also, we are one of the only programs that started the other way around, where, where we started more like acute, uh, response-based and then are drifting into Mobile Integrated Health, which I think is great because we're drifting into it with a pretty well-informed lens on what our community has versus just saying, well, the five most common things are generally these, we'll just try those out. I think it's a pretty informed approach based on what we've been doing, so. I, and I also think if we can take the information that we get from this pilot, we'll have a better idea of what we can do with our program long-term that will be the most beneficial for the community.
To the extent that, go ahead.
Nope, good.
To the extent that it sounds like you're doing great work and it's a concept that's working, we need as many people doing it as possible, I'm happy to move to approve the budget amendment to accept United Healthcare's investment to fund Mobile Integrated Health Initiative.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Claire, thank you. I think you started talking to, talking to me about this on our very first ride along together, so that was several years ago. It's exciting to see this.
There's also a second part I need to throw in there, if you don't mind.
Yes, go for it. Who wants to make that second motion? Thank you, Commissioner Horton.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second part of the motion carries. Thank you, Claire.
Yes, I do remember. Thank you.
It, that's only been a few years ago. That's where I was headed with that, that it, it's taken a few years to get here, so that's exciting to see. Alright, John Hudson, our Budget Director, has a budget amendment for technology purposes for the NC nine-one-one fund. Good evening, John.
Evening. So this budget amendment appropriates eight hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars of fund balance and inter-fund revenue to, in the nine-one-one fund to purchase nine-one-one consoles and components for fire station alerting. And the use of fund balance is encouraged by the state in the nine-one-one fund to realize additional funding.
Are there any questions for John? If not, do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented? Thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. Thank you, Commissioner Sloan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget amendment, amendment motion passes. Thanks, John. We have another budget amendment to establish conservation easement projects in the Open Space Bond Fund and Ariel Zipe. The Farmland Preservation Manager is going to give us some more information. Good evening, Ariel.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Alright, so, let's see. I'm here today to share some exciting new projects that we've been working on over the last little bit. So these projects have all been recommended by the Agricultural Advisory Board, um, for conservation easement funding. Um, just as a reminder, back in February, I presented to the board, um, on the agricultural growth zone funding that we received as a grant from North Carolina Department of Agriculture. So these funds were designated for us to be able to do conservation easements within our designated Buncombe County Conservation Focus Areas, as you see on the map there. So, um, in February, you approved to allocate the required match that we needed for this grant already from the Open Space Bond. And so I mentioned this just so that you know that these requests are coming from that fund that has already been, already been allocated for this grant. It's not a new request. Uh, we just wanted to make sure you got to see these projects and, um, and approve them as they come up. So, let's see. Alright, another, um, just a reminder, several years ago when we, um, started going through the Open Space, um, Bond process, um, the board adopted this criteria to evaluate the eligibility for the Open Space Bond funding. Um, so I mentioned this because, um, on each of the projects that I go through, I'll mention how, um, how many of these criteria they meet. And, um, just please note that you, they only need to, um, meet two of the eligibility require, um, criteria in order to be funded. And majority of ours are probably meeting four or five. Alright, we'll dive in on these projects. I'll have a slide per, for each and we'll talk through some of the conservation, uh, values of the property as well as the budget. So first up, we have Cedar Hill Farm. This is about sixty-three acres out in Alexander. Um, this property has cattle and hay production. We have fifty-three percent prime soils. This is a very important property. I call it a puzzle piece because it is bordered, um, by the Sandy Mush game lands on, um, almost, well, all three sides really. So it's really a, a very important piece as well as being bordered by the French Broad River, as you can see in the map there. And it meets five of those Open Space Bond criteria. So please note, majority of these requests today are for transaction costs. We will be coming back to present for easement purchase requests, and we have an estimate here just to give you an idea of the amount that you might see in the future. The reason we're doing it in this process is because we need to have the transaction cost to be able to do the full appraisal in order to give an accurate estimate of what those easement purchase funds will be. In addition to that, all of these projects will have twenty-five percent of that easement value being funded by that agricultural growth san- growth, growth zone grant, and then the other twenty-five percent will be coming from that bond match. So that's pretty standard for all the projects we're talking about today. So highlighted is the request that, that we will be, um, asking for your vote on today. And then moving to Wilson Farm, this is about twenty acres in the Fairview Community. This is incredible. We never see this in the mountains. We have a hundred percent prime soils on this parcel. Um, incredible for the future of resilient agriculture in our county. Um, this parcel is producing, um, tomatoes, squash and peppers. Um, King Creek bisects the property and there has recently been a finished stream restoration on that stretch, um, and really minimal, um, damage from Holene after that restoration. Also five of the seven criteria, and we have a very similar, um, budget breakdown where we are just asking for the, uh, transaction cost today, but we'll be back in the future. The next property, we have the Brown Legacy Farm. This is out in the Newfound Community. It's right off of Newfound Road, about twenty-four acres, and, um, also seventy-three percent prime soils, which is really high for the area. These two parcels are two non-contiguous parcels, but both are, um, being mowed or cut for hay, um, as well as have pretty high, um, scenic view shed protection. They're both very visible off of Newfound Road, which has become a bit of a commuter, um, road within that, uh, Lester Community. And also meets five of those seven criteria. We have a forty-six thousand eight hundred dollar transaction cost budget there. Alright, Saddle Brook Farm, this is twenty-three acres, um, just down the road from the Brown Legacy Farm. So we have a lot of close in proximity protected lands. Um, sixty-four percent prime soils, cattle and hay on the property, similar view shed protection as it's right on Newfound Road, five of seven criteria, and we have some water quality protection as Newfound Creek runs through the property as well. And then we have a, it's a fifty thousand five hundred transaction cost budget. Alright, now, um, we have three projects that are all kind of working together. This is a larger family farm. Um, we're calling it the Morgan Branch Farm Easement, but there are, um, three separate easements. But I just want to show you in this, in this image kind of how they're all working together. So very, lots of significant, um, proximity to other protected lands with this one, and, um, most of the ones that we're presenting today are kind of within that Newfound area. Um, so they are also kind of working on, off of each other. So a hundred and nine acres off of Newfound Road, um, I'm sorry, this, I believe, yeah, this one's off of Morgan Branch. Um, we have, uh, also Newfound Creek going through that. This property has had significant, um, stream mitigation work on it, so there's already stream easements on there protecting, and we will be filling in the rest of the property by protecting it there. Um, this is a larger tract, so the request is a little bit higher for transaction costs. Alright, Morgan Branch B, seventy-seven acres on Newfound Road. We have forty-three percent prime soils, also similar use of cattle and hay. Um, Newfound Creek also running through this area. This one directly across the, the road is, um, right across from another three-hundred acre protected farm we, we closed last year. Um, so this provides a lot of, um, adjacent protected lands. Um, and this also has, um, a stream easement on there, so we have that water quality benefit as well. Alright, and then last of the Morgan Branch properties is a hundred and forty-four acres. Um, all three of these properties are active working farms, also part of the Century Farm, North Carolina Century Farm Program, um, and have been, um, farming in this, in the community for a very long time. So similarly, cattle and hay, Newfound Creek also running through the property, um, and then six out of seven of that criteria with a seventy-eight thousand four hundred dollar request. Alright, and then last project of the night is Slocum Farm. So this project has already been to the Commissioners, um, for transaction costs, um, last year. So, um, this, uh, we now have this, uh, proposed funding structure of the same twenty-five percent Open Space, twenty-five percent Agricultural Growth Zone. Um, this is a, also a Century Farm. Um, previously it was some, uh, partial pasture, now it's mostly forest land. Um, and this has significant, and almost the entire backside of the property, um, is, is touching protected land that goes all the way through into Sandy Mush. So, um, yeah, as, as we note, about four hun- uh, four thousand five hundred acres, um, of protected lands that it already, it touches. So that's pretty incredible. So the request here to note, we've already secured that transaction cost funds. This one, um, is, is an easement purchase request for the Slocum Farm, while all of the rest are transaction costs. And so here's a breakdown, just to kind of summarize, um, the majority of the projects, we have those are transaction cost requests that are highlighted, and then just Slocum Farm is that easement purchase. We do want to remind you that we will be back with all of these projects, uh, once we have those official numbers. Do you have any questions?
Well, I just want to say thank you to staff and to the landowners because many of these projects were started well over a year ago, and then we, we all know what happened and delayed. And so I know, I really appreciate staff being able to pick that back up and get it to this point, and I know all the landowners appreciate that too, and they were, they were all, um, patient, but I'm sure they were making many phone calls to you and wondering what was going on and if we were going to be able to move through. So thank you for that. And I'll just say, I went out to several of these farms when we did the visits on the Ag Advisory Board, and it's just tremendous to see when you have this amount of acreage of prime soils, because you can see, I mean, what can be grown on, on that land. So to protect that for our future generations and to ensure that we can continue to have food grown here in this community is very impactful. And, and I think all of these farms actually were already doing some really great work around the stream and the water quality on these farms. Many of them had projects in place, and so that is really also important. And they spoke to that when they came to the Ag Advisory Board, the work that they had been doing around that as well, which was very impactful. And I'll just mention, I saw on our consent agenda, there were two conservation projects from, I think the Elk have from the Land Conservation Board, and it looks like, I'm not as familiar with those, but it looks like that those are, are forestry and protecting steep slopes as well, those two projects, which look like really good projects, close to other conserved land as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Those are both great projects from Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy.
And with that, unless there's other questions, I'm happy to make the motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you, Ariel. Alright, that is, brings us to the end of our new business this evening. We do have some boards appointments to make, and the first that we do need to discuss this evening is our Board of Adjustment Interviews. To schedule those for October twenty-first, we have ten total applicants. Five are re-applicants and five are new candidates, and want to look and see what time on the twenty-first we can all agree on. And Sarah, we typically take, what, ten minutes per, ten for each typically? Yeah, I think that's fair. We meet at three for our briefing. Do we want to meet? We meet at 3:00 for our briefing. Do we want to meet, can we do it by 1:00? 1 to 3:00? Does 1:00 work well? Drew, Martin?
Should.
Okay. All right, we're going to go with 1:00. Get Stacy to schedule those 10 for us.
Doesn't conflict with affordable housing?
No, because it's the 21st. It's the Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good catch, though. So early childhood and affordable housing are not meeting on those days. All right, thank you, Commissioners. We have, again, as I said, several boards' appointments. We have our Ag Advisory Board, and we have one appointment to make, and there has been a recommendation.
I'll move to appoint Joel Maury.
Do we have a second? All second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Joel Maury, appointed to the Ag Advisory Board. Our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one reappointment with a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'm, move that we appoint Shannon Martin to the JCPC.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Shannon Martin is reappointed. Our Planning Board has one reappointment with a recommendation for Eric Robinson. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Eric Robinson.
Thank you, Parker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Eric Robinson has been reappointed. Our Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee has two reappointments and two recommendations. Do we have a motion? Zorn's. All right, and a second from Commissioner Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, both of those have also been reappointed. All right, Commissioners, are there any board updates, boards or commission updates from the boards that you serve on? We'll start with Terry, and we can go around.
I have a couple of updates. So our Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority, the Tourism Product Development Fund Committee made some recommendations to the Board, and the Board supported those. And so there's going to be an investment of more than 12 million in a variety of really great projects around the county. Of course, we're very thankful that one of those was our, our very own Buncombe County Recreation Sports Park. And in addition to that, I was very pleased to see that a couple of them are in the Swananoa area. So the Warren Wilson College Aquatic Center and the Beacon Park over there, and Beacon Village were two of the ones that were awarded, so that was very exciting to see. And I did say I would provide you all an update from our School Capital Commission meeting. As you know, Dr. Jackson was here. He shared with us the, the interest in having us put bonds on the ballot. So I'll just give you an update. He shared some more information at our meeting. Staff said that they would, they need to run some models and be able to look at that around the debt capacity, looking at everything with the projects that the county wants to put forward, the requests from the schools, and any other bonds that are being considered. So they will be coming back to us with more information around those, those financials. But just to give you a sense with the discussion, the priorities, because we did ask, we said, "Well, can you prioritize?" Because, you know, they gave us a big list, right, of every single thing. And we know that we're not going to be able to do all that. And that's part of the reason that we do have the School Capital Fund, is to work on those projects over time. But the main request was around W.D. Williams being able to finish that, because they, they did Phase 1, and that they would like to be able, instead of continuing to have to phase that in, they'd like to be able to do the entire rest of the project. So that's around 30 million or so. Glenn Arden is one of the schools where they, they need a new school. That's about 45 million. And then the third aspect of that that they really love to do is be able to go ahead and do all the roofing. We've been having to phase roofing in over time. So if you total those up, it's around, it's right around 130 million if, if, if we were to proceed with that. And then, of course, then the city schools that said that they would also like to have some funding, too, if we were going to do this for Buncombe County. So there's all that to take into consideration. But at the end of the day, the basic thing is they need for us to come, to let them have, to give them a number of what we would be willing, if we're willing to put this on the ballot, what we would be willing to do that amount for. And that's where we'll come back, where staff will be bringing us some models of some numbers and everything, so we can make an informed decision, and then they'll be able to make their decisions at that time on what they prioritize. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. Commissioner Sloan?
Yeah, I'll just briefly update everybody. This, this came up in a niche way earlier during the briefing, but with affordable housing, at our, at our Affordable Housing Subcommittee, we met today. One of the things we do, we've done it several times over the years, is submit comments to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency regarding their, what's called their QAP, or their Qualified Allocation Plan. And it's a really wonky thing, but it's related to the low-income housing tax credit program, which is a federal program, America's most effective way we construct affordable housing in this country. And NC HFA manages that program and has parameters that they set up. And one of the, well, they set out several parameters that they're proposing for 2026, and during our, in our committee, we approved a letter for Chair Edwards to send that has, has a variety of comments on several items related to the QAP. And I guess I just wouldn't, it's good for you guys to know, but I suppose I wouldn't bring it up right now if it were not. Some of these are kind of important. They're really important, related to Halleen. There's a couple bad recommendations, I would say, that, that NC HFA has proposed regarding, kind of discounting some of the potential Lytech funding that we might get due to the Halleen funding that we hope to get. So if you have any questions, you can ask one of us about that. But this is the letter.
Great. Thank you, Parker. Drew, do you have any updates? Okay, no.
Second Parker's.
Second Parker's.
Well, this might cover myself and Commissioner Whitesides, but early childhood has been in the process of trying to figure out what our needs are in our community around early childhood, NC pre-K, and just taking inventory of all the things that Halleen did to our local childcare centers and figuring out what, what the highest and best use of our county's funds and our, I think generous commitment to funding early childhood education, but how we can best deploy that money in a way that's going to help working families throughout our county. The needs change, so we're trying to keep track of that and make sure that we are doing the best we can to make sure that everyone's taken care of without leaving behind the infants and the folks who are dealing with three and four-year-olds and figuring out where that money can be best, the highest and best use of that, that money.
Thank you, Martin. Commissioner Whitesides, early childhood, and Commissioner Horton, any updates? Okay, great. Thank you all. I appreciate this time that we get to hear from what is happening in our board service. All right, our next briefing and regular meetings will be held October 21st. The briefing is at 3:00 PM, and we have, as a reminder, moved those to the first floor conference. Oh, thank you. Okay, so, just kidding. That meeting will be here, and we will then move into our 5:00 PM regular meeting from there. And we do have a closed session this evening.
We do. We need a, a motion to move that the Board of Commissioners go into closed session for the following reasons: to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment of an individual public officer or employee. The statutory authority for this is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. All in favor say aye. Yes, oh wait.
Oh, and I just want to make sure that you will not need to come back and open sessions. There will be no further business.
We will adjourn from closed session. Yes, thank you. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Thank you, everyone. Do we have a room?